Test number one, test number one.
Check, check.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Can I tell my joke again?
Oh, no.
I don't think so. Does mine work?
Hey, Henry, what do you call a chicken staring at a head of lettuce? Chicken Caesar salad.
I'm so gonna do it.
You sound like some dad right there.
I gotta remember those.
I wish I could take credit, but I cannot.
I gotta, yeah, I was like, I have to tell Michael when I get home. They packed all day tomorrow, moving John back to his house. They don't come. And today, we packed everything in the car.
I was having trouble too, so I just kind of put it on hard shutdown, went in doubt, bog out. That's what I tell my kids.
It usually works.
We used to call the computer center when we had trouble. Shut it off and turn it back on. The half a ton of work. Let's try that part.
Like, if he doesn't do football forever, so I just.
What did we do? What did we do? Were we in trouble? Oh, no.
How's it doing, sir? Good, good.
If you'd like to speak.
You want to speak? Do we have?
It's clear over there where the, where you come in.
All the way over there by the trash can.
Here it is again, the current of the Heisenberg.
Right.
You can smile, it's true.
I can't.
Yeah, I am excited about moving. I might actually go to one of those whole. Fans, things, I never go to those big general.
You know, I don't know if it's always been there, but I see that there's like a thing here that says type parentheses consent. Does it just mean it's an action? Yeah, type action, so that's all. It's probably always been there, and I've never seen it.
Worst case scenario, did I just bring it over and plug it in? The air wifi is. What do you want?
Is that empty mask?
Yeah.
Well, quiet mask.
Yeah. How did he do? How did he do? Like, was he fine? Going off or did he get a little? Gavin's supportive peer with Seth.
This is a place to be.
Oh, boy.
The year before, Gavin went AC.
Oh, it's good, you know, we'll be ready tomorrow night. Get your sausage, steaks, hoagies, and hot dogs. We're trying something different this year. We, uh, we're dragging three of the people out in front of the trailer. So there'll only be three people in the trailer. See if it makes a difference to a point. He strokes, you know, he strokes over it. Six people in a hot grease trailer dog is overrated, so.
Like Buzz, like, oh, like it. So he gave Gavin, he, he gave Seth Buzz, right? Okay, that's not like he's gonna play.
Now you jinxed it. Lost your mouth.
Remember, I said something last time about this should be short. I said, don't jinx it.
Please don't jinx it.
Some news pictures with all of his new friends and Buzz. Apparently, they're like taking him every pair, and I'm sure too. That's what they're doing. And I was like, oh, it's not even hidden away. It's actually hanging out.
Those need to be signed.
I didn't bring your flamingo.
Yep. There's a table. There's a table there.
Yeah, some blankets. Get ready, folks.
What does everybody want in the middle of August? A ham, ham, and a blanket.
I don't know. I don't know what, what I like to do. You can do the dive fish. Get yourself. This is goldfish. You know, you can eat the goldfish, your cake. Watch out.
Well, good evening, everyone. It is seven PM on August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. And I'd like to welcome everyone in the room and those participating online as I call to order this meeting of the Bellebrook Sugar Creek Board of Education for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. We value everyone's input and have made sure to dedicate a portion of this meeting to hear from you. We look forward to your comments during that time as it's indicated on the agenda. Mr. Liming, please call a roll.
Mrs. Anderson.
Here.
Mrs. Dorn.
Here.
Mr. Kinsey.
Present.
Mr. Price.
Here.
Dr. Pryor.
Present.
All right, we have a quorum. If you're able, will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so we do not have a treasurer's report tonight, correct? Anything to add, sir? Okay, so that takes us to number two on our agenda, correspondence. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share for the good of the board?
I pick up a Carlo to middle school boys, and they would like to commend Mr. Alvarez on them really good corn dogs this year. Yeah. They're, they're better than last year. The big corn dogs, they're awesome. So keep up the good work.
Interesting correspondence.
I'll take it. Anybody else? All right, so we will move into good news recognition. Is Mr. Futterer with us? They're hiding behind the thing. There we go. You don't mind joining me, sir? So, Mr. Chris Futterer, we are recognizing tonight for ten years of loyal service in our transportation department. Driving a van and assistant transportation. So thank you so much for everything you do. Really appreciate you. If there's anything you'd like to share with everybody, if you have your comments.
I was thinking about that. How long you guys got? Better writer than I am the speaker. I'm like, God, I'll just email everybody. Not everyone, anybody, you know, I still got to put an email out. Maybe Doug can send it out there. No, this is, um, I guess, you know, um, the bottom line is, what's you do for the kids? Doug has said that at the meetings all the time. You're there, and you're a counselor, and you're they're the first person you see every day in the morning, and the last one, you know, on the bus or on the van, and when you get off, you know, to go home. So you're a real, you are a real important part of their, um, their day. So, I mean, there's times I've driven the van and counseled at the same time, you know, two or three kids and all, and, um, it's really rewarding. And I'm going to, if Doug will still let me be a sub as needed down the road, I'd like to be a sub still. I just can't hard, hard, excuse me. You can't break away from this because you still, you know, it's a fine staff, transportation staff, work with the administrators both at our school, and I go to the learning center, and you get to know people, and other bus drivers, and you work in conjunction, you know, in line and all that out there. And, um, so, I mean, just everybody that you work with or work for has just been phenomenal. But the, the main, um, I think the joy and the reward I get out of it is definitely working with the children, being part of their lives, making a positive impact. So, um, I think this, on the way home, I'll, I'll think of stuff I missed. I know. I haven't what to say, but very grateful for this and ten. Into everybody, but really sometimes Doug would talk to me, and I'd see him, and he would say, Chris, don't forget the formula. Plus R equals O. And he says, yeah, watch that R. You broke it. Watch that R. But, uh, so, and, um, oh, you also reinforced about hit pause. If something comes up, maybe you don't, you know, like, into situations, you don't really agree with something. Hit pause or don't hit send right away. Wait till the next day and reread your stuff, you know. Small stuff, nothing big, but, you know, so Doug has coached me individually. So, um, he's been a good mentor. Um, but I don't know, it's just, um, I don't know, but I've choked up here. But I enjoy my job. Enjoy the kids. That's the biggest, greatest part of it. Of course, again, work with the staff and the teachers and everybody. And, and all the guys who I've known here, uh, guys meaning women and, and, and boys. Men and women. Again, I'm better writing than I am speaking. So I guess that's pretty much all I've got to say. I thank everybody, and thanks for inviting me and the support, you know, I just, um, I'll hang it up with pride. Again, I hope I get back to sub here, you know, probably takes ninety days, I think. It was a tough decision to retire, I'll tell you. I mean, I was like, all summer long, I was just like flipping a coin and always landed on this edge. But, so it took a while to get there, but I figured, yeah, why not? If I can come back, we eat sub and serve with the kids, you know, I'll do that. So it's not, I'm not totally gone, so I kind of, you know, get my cake and eat it too, I guess, so to speak. So again, thank you so much, everybody. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Congratulations on your retirement.
Congrats. Yeah. Take all my hand. That's right.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Chris, your interest and love and passion for children really comes across, and just, this isn't the end of that. You can continue to do it. There's other, there are other ways to do it, you know. Volunteering and all, so that was, it was really touching to hear your words tonight. So, thank you. Yeah, appreciate it.
Our transportation department does such an awesome job and such a difficult job, but I don't know how they do. Couldn't do it without them. I have a hard time keeping track of two kids in the back of my own truck that are mine, so I don't know how they do it.
Yeah, they do an awesome job.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we now move into reports to the board, and we would like to welcome Mr. Adam Romali. Thank you so much for being here.
Glad to be here as always. Uh, just a brief update on the Green County Career Center. We've got thirty, thirty-nine seniors and thirty-six juniors out at the Career Center in Bellebrook. It's over a thousand students. And so that is kind of forcing us into evaluating options for new school or new areas or looking at ways to expand. It really has been, you know, you guys were here when it was opened, and it's already pushing capacity. So that's been a great news story. Uh, school started August twelfth, and one of the things that they've implemented is the yonder pouches. You know, all of the phones are now in pouches, and it's been well received. There hasn't been, you know, the hue and cry from either parents or students or, you know, it seems to be more accepting than the teachers and the administrators like it. So it's been a, a big improvement, you know, from um, previous years as far as some of the issues associated with the cell phones. So those yonder pouches have been a big success. And I just want to briefly touch on one, uh, recent event some of you may have seen. It was the Guard Care Day out at the Green County Career Center. And what that was, was, um, the national, the Ohio National Guard is part of their individual readiness training, uh, their medical corps. And so they go around to counties around Ohio and provide medical care for the community members. So that was, uh, two weekends ago out at the Green County Career Center. They serviced over a thousand people over the two days, providing dental care, eye care, there were people getting eyeglasses, there were all kinds of medical care, and, you know, feedback from the National Guardsmen were, you know, just ecstatic with, there'd been times they'd been out at county fairs and doing things in some of the, you know, the less, you know, more austere conditions than the Green County Career Center. So, you know, we won't have them back because it's a rotation thing, you know, they, they service the entire state, but, uh, just, just know that it was a good event. So with that, um, I don't have any other, uh, report, but if there's any questions, I'd more than welcome to take any questions.
I have a couple of questions here. One, the yonder pouch, I mean, okay, obviously, here within Bellebrook, you know, we've got where the middle school kids don't have access to their phones at all, but high school, it's, you know, it's a little bit different. So what, what's the yonder pouch? Because that's the same age group that we're talking.
Yeah, what, what they do with the yonder pouches is you purchase them and then, uh, the school purchases them and they're, they store them. The kids put their phone in during the day, and then they can't have them back till the end of the day. And, you know, and there are emergencies and things like that, but most of us grew up without cell phones and somehow managed to matriculate to adulthood. So, you know, that eight hours or six hours or whatever it is during the day that, you know, they kind of use it as, you know, reduces friction, you know, however you want to describe, you know, sometimes cell phones contribute to things that we really don't want to deal with. And so, and I think it's been part of Governor Dewine, you know, there's some legislation out there as well, I thought, that was associated with, you know, cell phones and being available in schools and things like that. So there are other schools in the community. I think Fairborn's using it, and there are others as well. So it's one of those that has been, you know, has worked for other places, and so this was the first year that we implemented it.
Yeah, because, you know, the middle school level, you know, it, because otherwise kids can just get in their own little world, and they not can, they do get in their own little world at lunchtime, and they don't connect, you know, and, and, and social development is such a critical thing for all of our children, you know. And so it's interesting that they've done it to high school, essentially high school level, the Green County Career Center. Also, you have no plans to leave, right? You're gonna keep?
No, I'm, I'm very happy. I enjoy, I, I, you know, I serve at the pleasure of the superintendent and the board, and I will continue to do it until you guys, you know, I'm not ready to retire yet, you know, and I, even after I retire, I'd still do it. I, I enjoy the mission, I believe, and what's going on out there. But I also welcome the opportunity to represent Bellebrook there and things like that. So, no, sir.
So grateful for what you're doing, though. It's really important. Thank you.
Invite you all to the, I think you're all aware of the Lions Club Festival, so Lions Club Festival this weekend. Um, I will be at the sausage trailer, so if you want sausage, steak, hoagies, chicken fingers, fries, or hot dogs, I will be selling them, so, and I will be there, so. Any other questions? Sorry. All right. Thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of your week and your life.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you very much. All right, so now we have our regular board committee reports, and I am first on the list as a OSBA legislative liaison. Uh, I really don't have much. If you didn't know, the Ohio Legislature's been in recess since sometime in June, which I think was pretty close to the last time we did one of these, and they're not expected to come back till after the election in November. Uh, but one thing that I did find, and just, we haven't had a chance to talk about it, so just in case folks didn't know, maybe already did. Uh, this got signed into law fairly recently, kind of, kind of a rush, rush thing, but a good thing. House Bill forty-seven, it's going to require placement of an AED or a defibrillator in public school buildings. Uh, and it actually specifies and enumerates individuals who have to be trained on it. And when I look at this list, I'm like, who doesn't have to be trained on it? It's, it's almost everyone. Um, it also is going to require that meetings be held prior to athletic seasons in order to educate everybody, parents, coaches, kids, on symptoms and warning signs of sudden cardiac arrest in young student athletes. Something to have on the radar, and it sounds like some more training coming down the pike.
That, because I know we have, have them in the buildings. Do we have them close to the athletic fields as well?
Yeah, I don't know if Mr. Odell wants to chime in or anything. I, I think we're really solid on that. All of our staff gets training on that through public school works. They have, you know, before the season, they have a meeting, and part of that virtual meeting and AED is a piece of that, so. I don't know if you want to chime in anywhere else on that.
Sure. Um, every coach is trained, um, every single year, um, on, on, on AED. We do have the trainer has one in the golf cart, just wherever, wherever, wherever he's at. We have one, I showed us on the floor right here, um, serves basketball. And then at the stadium, there's one in the locker room. The newest one is on the shed. Also serves the walkers and people, people who know their exercise. That's the newest one. And then the goal is to get one here, probably the next year, on the press box for baseball. That would serve sort of cross-country practice, baseball, softball, obviously. Might even be close to one of the playground, the new playground, BCI two.
Do their sportsmen? In person, take one on away games? Do we have one with us? Super. That's outstanding, because.
The trainer, the trainer, essentially, when trainers are on duty, they have the AED with them on their back.
Yeah, we have the new ones in our buildings. We just got those last year, the year before. We've just gotten new ones, and actually, um, we're upgrading one at the middle school that's by the, those baseball fields and softball fields just right inside when they open those doors for games back there for restrooms. So I, we're, we're covered on that already. We're, yeah. Our nurses do a fantastic job of making sure that we're good to go and everything else.
Sure they do. Yep. That's really all I have. Uh, up next, unless people have questions. Up next, unless people have questions. Okay, the Capital Conference and Student Achievement Liaison, Mrs. Anderson?
Um, yeah, Capital Conference is coming up November tenth, eleventh and twelfth. So it's time for me to collect nominations for the Student Achievement Fair. My first nominee is going to be our drone team from the high school, the hog flyers. I'm going to nominate them to be featured at the Student Achievement Fair. We do have one more slot, so if any of our administrators would like to nominate somebody, I will take care of that as soon as you get that information. And the deadline is October thirtieth, but I like to have it in relatively soon, so we get a good spot. So beyond that, we just had articles about, they sent out articles about how student achievement is affected by cellphone use, but we've already taken care of that. So we always seem to be one step ahead of OSBA, so, which is not surprising, so.
Questions for Mrs. Anderson? All right, BSCF with Dr. Prior.
Well, this Saturday is the Bellbrook Sugar Creek Education Foundation's big annual fundraiser, the Color Run. It's a five K walk, run, skip, stroll, whatever you want to do, starting at BCI and goes through Cables Mill. And everyone's supposed to wear white and they throw colored powder on you in different stations throughout, so you're all rainbowed up by the time you're done. So if anyone's interested in that, it starts at eight o'clock in the morning. Running actually starts at eight-thirty, so you're supposed to arrive around eight. You can sign up online, um, at, you know, there's a Bellbrook Sugar Creek Education Foundation Facebook page with links. So that's going to be really fun and I will be there. And also they would love new members. The Bellbrook Sugar Creek Education Foundation does great things. They donate to the drone team and give teachers grants for, you know, interesting things they want for their classroom that aren't covered by normal school, you know, money. So, and they do some student scholarships, so it's a very great association if anyone's interested. And they only meet like four times a year, so it's not a huge commitment.
Thank you for representing there. All right, Financial Advisory and Safety Committee from Mr. Price.
So, um, I just became part of the Financial Advisory Committee to the superintendent, I guess, in the spring and we had our one meeting at the end of the year. And so with respect to school funding, health of our, financial health of our district, it's, it's a special interest of mine. And so I think it's really good that I've been able to take on that role or at least serve on that committee, I guess is a better way of saying it. Of note, there are districts in our community, or not in our community, in the state that are very similar to ours in the, in the sense of they don't have an income tax for their schools, they don't use like a sales tax for their schools. They are regarded by the state as being affluent and as a result, they receive, you know, next to nil funding from the state. And, you know, a district as wonderful, as wonderful as ours is, is always just a few steps ahead of the wolves because of the inherent broken method in which our school districts are funded. And so there are some fifty or sixty districts throughout the state, very similar to ours, that, you know, are weathering the storm that's perpetual, it seems. Centerville is a good example. You see what's going on down there now with levy challenges. Other districts such as Beaver Creek, Loveland, um, in particular. And they, Loveland recognizing this and facing several levy failures, of which they passed one, as I recall, like two years ago, but they're on the, on the cusp of having to pass another one because of, you know, this inherent issues with school funding in Ohio. And so they, they stood up and created a, like we were saying, a working group that's looking at working with the state on funding reform. And, and there's no one solution, no one size fits all for any of this. But one of the things they're looking to do, and this is a little complicated, you have the formula funding where they look at how many kids, I don't know how many kids, how much money is in your district, how much, what's the value of your real estate? And they figure that out and then some other factors involved with it and they, that's how they determine how much money they're going to give you. A district like ours, which gets on the order of six point two million dollars a year from the state, if we actually followed the formula, we would even get less. So we are on what's called the guarantee. But that guarantee money, if you look at our five-year forecast, it's fixed. It's, it's, it was about six point two million dollars a year. And even when COVID hit, I think they actually reduced it that year of all things. So you'd think they would give us more money, instead they actually reduced it. I think we recouped it later, but regardless, it was, anyhow, not to get, get too long-winded here, but one of their, their initial focuses with this working group is if they could get the state to at least index to the CPI, Consumer Price Index, you know, every year, give a three and a half percent increase to it. So that's, it's not going to solve our problem, it would get us roughly, I'm trying to remember, Dr. Cozad, what was it?
A little over two hundred thousand dollars.
So two hundred thousand dollars a year on a thirty-five million dollar budget. So it's not going to help us a whole lot, but there's no one single solution to this. And so this is just by engaging with the state, they're reminding them that there, there is a problem, not to one district, not to one or two, but really a sizable portion of, of districts that really are the shining stars for the state in terms of performance and how our, you know, a model for, like this district is to the whole country frankly, in terms of student performance, thanks to our teachers, thanks to our community. But we're, again, we're just a few steps ahead of way of, of near disaster because of that. So they are working this and it, it's going to be a long-term effort. It, it, I think will never cease, but it will continue to, this, this group will continue to engage with the state, organize among ourselves, for lack of a better way of saying it. I am, you know, from a distance on that committee, uh, one thing we've looked at is having some local volunteers from our community that could participate in that. And, uh, David Carpenter was previously the president of, of the board and long-term, long-term serving board member. It looks like he is quite interested from a citizen's level of, uh, basically being the representative from our community to this group. And that's really good because David has the knowledge of how schools function. He's now a retiree, so he can relate to those in our community that are on fixed incomes and how they are so challenged by these recurring property taxes increases and the need thereof. So, uh, I think David may well at least participate to a significant degree with that group. But it's, you know, I'll, I'll update from time to time on that. At least there are efforts, efforts afoot to address how our schools are funded. But unfortunately, the, the financial outlook from the state is not promising. There even, there's, there's a concern that the guarantee could go away altogether. And if so, and we're, if we are just, if we were really on, on the formula, like I said, we would get even less, you know. Make up a number, a million, half a million or whatever. So, you know, it's a long, long subject, but just be aware that there, there is effort. And if there are people in our community that would like to be involved, we don't need a committee of a hundred, but we need one or two or three people that will work with this working group, again, led by Loveland, and then engage with our legislators on how we can look at, you know, helping, helping, addressing the gap essentially that exists for a quote-unquote well-to-do district like ours. Our district indeed is well-to-do, but not everybody is, you know. Half are, half aren't. And so that's, hence the challenge, so. Sorry to talk so much, but it's really important. And, you know, right now we are sitting very healthy financially in this district, but it will not, it's not perpetual. You know, there, there will come a point where our district will have to look at either another levy or, you know, the real prayer here is that the state would reform how they fund our districts and we wouldn't have to deal with that. So, um, anyhow, Safety Committee, we haven't met this year yet, so at some point, I assume Mr. Eckley will, is taking over from Janess as far as leading that group. And then so we'll have a financial meeting, uh, sorry, financial, a safety meeting, which I can update, provide an update for, at a later date, so.
I think we have one in the next month or so.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be before the next, I think before the next committee report.
Okay.
I think so, yeah.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is a report from myself and Mrs. Dorn, uh, from the Implementation Committee for the Active Shooter Response Team that we have for the district. So that committee hasn't met in quite a while. There hasn't been a need, everything's been running very smoothly, very well. And it occurred to me, we're coming up on our two-year anniversary, I think, of passing the resolution that formed that committee. In case you don't know, that committee is made up of the City of Bellbrook Chief of Police, the Sugar Creek Township Chief of Police, a representative, a very skilled gentleman from the Green County Sheriff's Office, some of our administrators, we thank Mr. Hand for serving on that committee. So not really much to report there from committee standpoint, but some things that I can share is that if you recall from a resolution that was passed, there were several, what, hoops? Somebody had to jump through in order to become highly vetted and highly trained to join. Many because we wanted to make sure that we far exceeded the standard that the state was satisfied with. Well, two of those were on an annual basis for a recertification and that all members of the team would have to take an eight-hour requalification course. And I got some notes here, I can describe that a little bit in a second if you're curious. As well as pass, it's a live-fire shooting qualification, which is the OPADA live-fire qualification. It's the same qualification that every police officer in the state has to pass in order to qualify with their weapon. So I can report that all of that has been done and, and not just done, but extremely well. All of our team members were at or near the top of the classes that they took and very easily, very easily passed the OPADA qualification. And Dr. Cozad is tracking all of that. I said classes because, um, actually, so there was the eight-hour requalification class and that's required by the state, something that the syllabus that the state puts their stamp of approval on. It covered mitigation techniques, de-escalation, communication, accountability. Talks about some reunification, but we know there's a plan and other folks that are really strong in that. Psychology of critical incidents, crisis intervention, some trauma and first aid care, tourniquets and chest seals, things like that. History of critical incidents like this. And then a lot of time spent on the range, most specifically in scenario-based training. So that was the eight-hour minimum requalification course. Our team decided to step up and, and even though what our minimum is, is more than what the state wants, our team said, well, hey, you know what, that, that's not good enough, we want to do an additional course. So they did, um, an advanced eight-hour course put on by the Ohio School Safety Center. That's a division of the Ohio Department of Public Safety and they teach that course. And really that was all range time for the most part, really focusing a lot of skills, but very much in scenario training and difficult decisions, thinking on your feet, really, really excellent training. I think that's all I have to report. Questions?
Just comment, I'm, I'm just grateful for those that have volunteered to serve in that capacity and equally grateful to our community and to, um, Bellbrook City and Sugar Creek Township for SROs that we have been able to add, you know. So I think, you know, we have done what we can to protect our schools, our teachers, our, our students, our staff. You know, we haven't turned it into a, an penitential fortress, but we have done, I think we've done our due diligence to protect our school district and, uh, which I felt like was an incumbent thing upon us after what happened at Uvalde. And, uh, I am satisfied that we have, you know, taken appropriate steps. There's always more we should, wish we could do, but for right now, I'm, I'm confident that what we have is a deterrent to would-be evildoers that would come and visit our district. And, uh, I appreciate those that have helped in whatever capacity for that.
You know, this is totally separate, we should probably mention that, um, the city police department and the township police department and fire departments did a joint training exercise at the middle school over the summer. I want to thank, you know, Dr. Cozad and everybody for allowing the resources of that so that those folks could go out there and get some quality, real-world training. I, I think it was much appreciated, so thank you for supporting that.
My pleasure.
Okay, so that is all for our board committee reports and we would now like to welcome up our high school principal, Mr. David Hand, to talk about advanced placement. Thank you for being here. All right, so, um, first of all, as you guys know, we have a pretty strong AP program here at Bellbrook High School and it is kind of culmination of, again, the, the entire district, uh, from pre-K through the high school. You know, I, I mentioned it opening day, the high school kind of gets to put the cherry on top at the end. It's kind of the flagship building, but it, it gets, all the teachers, all the aides, all the admins from kindergarten, pre-K, all the way up, uh, kind of lead to what we're able to do here at the high school. And we're very proud of that. The button? Which button? It's on. So, um, kind of our first slide talks about College Board. College Board, as you guys know, is a nonprofit organization, kind of created at the turn of the century, so around eighteen ninety-nine, to kind of help students gain more access to higher education. Obviously, back then, the numbers of students going on the, even high school, but much less college was pretty low. College Board provides resources and services to students and to parents and colleges and universities, what helps with college planning. Back. Recruitment, admissions, financial aid and also retention, okay? And College Board is the people who sponsor the SAT, the PSAT, and then of course, advanced placement. All right, so AP, uh, it was created by College Board, I believe in the forties or fifties, in order for kids in the United States and also Canada who score well on tests to help earn college credit. Each AP course is designed by experts and college professors. And to be labeled as an AP course, for us to say we have an AP course, these classes must pass a board audit, a college board audit and meet annual curriculum standards and also, um, you know, we started, we kind of came to the table a little bit late, I think. Bellbrook started adding AP courses in the late nineties and early two thousands. I know I graduated in ninety-three and my little tiny little school, we had three or four AP classes there. So it's a little bit surprising, but since that time, Bellbrook has continued to grow the program and we really have a very robust program now. Okay, we have sixteen courses currently offered. Biology, Calc AB, Calc BC, Chemistry, Computer Science A, Computer Science Principles, which we added in eighteen nineteen, English Language, English Lit, Environmental Science, Music Theory, Physics, Precalc, which we added a year or two ago, Psychology, which is new this year, Stats, US Government and US History. We also used to have French and Spanish back when we were still able to offer those courses at the middle school. Way it is now, we can't get to year five, but instead we offer some CCP for those kids, so they're still an opportunity to gain college credit in those foreign languages. All right, so this little graph here, I think you have a copy of, shows kind of AP participation over time. And you can see where Bellbrook started and how we've kind of rose sharply, leveled off a bit and now we've, uh, taken some steps forward again. Last year, we had three hundred and ninety tests attempted, which is over a hundred more than we did the previous year. And we had a hundred and ninety-one different students take an AP test, which was a growth or a gain of thirty-two kids. Our passing percentage last year, so of all those kids, those three hundred and ninety tests, ninety-three percent of those tests were a three or above, which is a new record for us. And I, I have records going all the way back to the beginning. So ninety-three percent of the kids had a three or above. The previous high was a few years ago, twenty twenty-two, and we topped out at eighty-nine percent. We had, uh, so really, it's kind of, it's crazy, but the, the, the top four, four, the top five of our highest percentage passing rates have been the last five years. Uh, the COVID was not one of those years. But other than that, uh, those other four years have been in the top five, so our kids and our teachers are killing it. And not only are they passing with a, a three, which is considered passing by most people, but this year we had the highest percentage of fives that we've ever had, with thirty-two percent of the tests were a five, which is the highest score you can get. Previously, uh, our record was last year, with twenty-nine percent. So we're on a roll. The highest percentage of fours we ever had previous to this, um, was, uh, what was it? I don't have it in there, but this year we were at, so it's okay, so this year, this is what's crazy. Not only were at ninety-three percent passing rate, but we had the highest percentage of fives and the highest percentage of fours we've had in school history. Uh, so this was a really great, uh, year. Click the next one there. And the next one. There we go. So last year, like I said, kind of a record-setting year and it's going to hit some of those things. Highest student participation, had a hundred and ninety-one different kids, most tests given, three hundred and ninety tests were taken. Highest passing percentage, the highest percentage of fives, the highest percentage of fours. And we had the most AP scholars with distinction. So something that started a few years ago is, uh, students can, the next one, can be labeled as AP scholars. They can be AP scholars with honor and then the highest ranking is AP. They can be AP scholars with honor, and then the highest ranking is AP scholars with distinction. And what that means is kids who receive an average score of at least a three and a half on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on at least five of those AP exams. And we had 33 kids reach that goal or at that level last year. And overall, we had 70 kids recognized with one of these levels of distinction. So that's, that's a crazy number for us. That's the highest we've ever had. You know, and again, that kind of shows you our last four years, how that's played out, our AP scholars, in this case, scholars with distinction. So again, our kids are killing it. Our AP teachers are doing a great job preparing our students for these tests. They're confident enough to take these tests, and it's paying off, not only in the results, but also for our kids getting that college credit wherever they may go. Any questions?
For the, you say like Spanish is no longer offered for AP because they have to have five years to be able to take the test? Is that what it is?
Yeah, it's year five, yeah.
Okay.
You still have a few kids who will take the test, but it's not offered through the school. It's not a class, they may take them on their own. So every so often, we'll get one or two kids. But now we offer college credit plus classes.
So they can get their fifth year that way, then they can go do, or they still have to go external?
Where they're getting college credit, up to three college credits, really. So they can take it year three, four.
I see.
It's, you know, it's a, it's a trade-off. It's not the AP, but it is college credit. So, you know, from my understanding, from my reading, your, especially your more, where I'm looking for, difficult colleges to get into, they would prefer to see AP classes over CCP. Because if those classes in general are more difficult, more challenging, more rigorous than some of those one-on-one classes you may take at a college. And we, it's, it's a definite effort to continue to keep our kids on campus, taking those rigorous classes here versus going off and taking a class at a local college. And we've done a pretty good job of that. Like I said, we had more kids take it this year than we ever had in the past. It's giving those kids the opportunity and bring more kids under the tent a little bit and give them a chance as well. And it's paying off. Teachers are doing a great job, and the kids are doing a great job, and that's the result.
So if I heard it correctly, they prefer they take the AP test rather than, so they don't have to take the college course because they prefer the AP test, they prefer what you get in high school over what you could get in college and...
Well, it's, 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 okay, I, well, I don't want to speak badly of things, but let's say, the AP courses are generally tougher, more rigorous courses than a course you would take as a one-on-one, integrable course on college. So those court, those more selective colleges would like to see you challenge yourself in high school with those AP courses rather than, you know? It's a trade-off. I mean, you have a guarantee, you take a class at CCP, you have that transcripted credit, hey, I, you know, got an A in whatever, English one-on-one? But, you know, so that's good, but AP courses are also seen as a little bit more prestigious. Any other questions?
Are there any, are there any subjects on the horizon, things that you're considering adding to the AP?
There's always something we're looking at. A few things we've kind of thrown around, there's an AP seminar, which is kind of a research class, research-type class, it's kind of an honors English type thing we've discussed in the past. AP Human Geography, AP World History, those are some that are offered in the area that we may have room in our schedule to play with. But those are kind of ones on the horizon. We offer multiple AP courses in all of our core subject areas, so it's just tweaking here or there. We have enough kids to do it, so that's good, and who would excel at it and who would want to do it, so those are possibilities.
Not a question, but just a comment. Again, you were saying earlier, but very impressive results. I mean, it just, this goes to show you, there's some serious learning going on in the school and a culture of learning and a culture of serious academics and well-rounded with other things too, obviously, arts and, and sports and athletics and everything else. But kids are here to learn and some serious stuff going on, so kudos to you and your staff for getting it done. And also, as you said earlier, you know, it just doesn't start at the high school, middle school, BCI and Stephen Bell, that's those solid foundations and those, and they just, you know, they're able to build upon those rather than trying to catch up, they're building and expanding even more, so.
Couldn't do without everybody else, obviously, so it's a, it's a team win. And again, the kids and the staff are working their tails off, they're well-prepared, and again, the results speak for themselves, I think.
Yeah, appreciate everybody's work.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Mr. Price, can I impose, do you want to grab our list if you could? It's out there somewhere by the door. Your thoughts and comments are very welcome during this time. When given the floor, please share your name, address, and any group affiliation you hold if it's relevant to your comments. You'll then have five minutes for your comments, which should be directed toward the presiding officer, who tonight happens to be me. This time is for the board to listen and absorb, and as such, traditionally, a dialogue is not created in this moment. In case you're wondering, the reason for these policies, which can be read in their entirety on the district's website, policy number 169.91, is to ensure that as many people as possible have the opportunity to speak and that everyone is treated equally and fairly. And with that, we would like to welcome Mr. Forrest Greenwood. Always good to see you, sir, appreciate you coming. You have five minutes.
Thank you for doing a great job. Been a while since I've been in this building. My youngest graduated in 2000, she was the first class to go through four years of this building. It's been a while, but the question that I have is busing, and the old village, the kids that walk to school have a fairly large hill to go, pretty good distance. I've, I called transportation, talked a little bit about how you do busing. I saw the map and the different grades, different times, different buildings, it all. It's complicated, I guess, best way to say it. And I've had questions brought to me about why they can't have busing service from downtown to here. And the, I said, well, I'll check, because a lot of people won't, they won't come here and ask you. They, they won't complain, they'll, but we have people that leave their homes with the kids, haven't got on the bus, or maybe not even left to get on a bus. So they're kind of on their own. And the other thing is weather, inclement weather, y'all know all this stuff. But I see a lot of school buses go through Bellbrook downtown. I just wonder if there's a way to maybe address that concern with people? It's, I don't know how many, I know there's two or three. There, some of them are single moms, single dads, and they don't have the resources to, like a sitter, or maybe they, they don't have someone that can drive their child to school, maybe in a case of bad weather or whatever. But if there was a, I don't know, if somebody's passing through town, stop at a certain time, I don't know. It's, I know you guys work real hard on the transportation. I know it's a, a financial issue, it costs a lot of money to drive buses, buy buses, fuel buses, and pay drivers. It's, it's the way it is. So that was, it's not a concern, and I'm not blaming anybody. It's just something that I thought if you could just take an extra look and see what, say, I looked at it, it's kind of complicated. You know, with the different schools, different times, and we picked this one up and then we drop him, you know? That's all I have, and your football field stadium, outstanding, looks great. The whole stadium and everything is, looks as good as I've ever seen it. But continue on, appreciate your work, thanks.
Thank you very much, appreciate you coming, appreciate you asking those questions. All right, that brings us to the end of my list, so we are now going to close open communication period. Are we on six, superintendent's report?
I believe so, yep, yep. All right, so new business, six, this is going to be a consent agenda, so six A, support staff employment, resignation, leave of absence, that's six A. And then six B is substitute employment, substitute employment, so six A and B.
Sumo, second.
Mrs. Dorn, and then Mrs. Anderson, and that was a long time to our first motion.
Yes.
Okay, any questions? All right, Mr. Liming, please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda, which is six A and six B.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
All right, number seven, payment in lieu of transportation, non-public and private schools. So recommend approval for payment in lieu of transportation services for students attending area non-public, private schools for the 24, 25 school year, due to impracticality providing school district transportation per ORC 3327.O2, parentheses B.
Sumo.
Mrs. Anderson and then Mrs. Dorn. Questions, comments?
So this is a state requirement that children that live within the district, that the local school district has to provide transportation. That's just for ORC here.
Have to provide transportation or have to have payment in lieu of providing that transportation, correct? And so the next motion is the list of those students that will be getting that amount, but these are the, but these are the list of school districts that we, that we have students go to and going to, but we do not provide busing to them through our own transportation.
And the state doesn't provide funding, right, back to us?
They, they provide funding for, for transportation, but not for these, unless, Mr. Liming, you know something different, correct? So for, for transportation, but not for this.
Right.
Not for this specific thing.
So it's one of those unfunded mandates we often hear about, just a specific, a specific example of one, so.
Correct.
And the transportation funding that's provided is not anyways close to complete. 10 or 20% of the cost, probably.
So we can't afford to bus all our own students here, but we are required to pay for other students to go other places instead?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Just checking.
On top of the Ed Choice vouchers that students are getting, which is a different topic.
Are you allowed to tell me, like, how, how much do we pay?
Yeah, so $583 per student is the max amount for, for this, so it's based on attendance also. So $583 is the max amount, that is set by the state, not by the district, it's set by the state.
It looks like we have about, I don't know, 40 or 50 we're doing this for?
Well, these are just the schools.
Yeah, these are just the schools, we're on, we're on A still.
I know, but she, she was asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just the list of schools, not all of the students attending all of these schools, right?
Right, that's on the next.
That's the next one.
Yeah, I jumped ahead and...
That's seven B, yes.
I mean...
No, that's seven B, that's...
No, yeah, I understand that, but I was just kind of, when she was asking how much, you know, I'm just trying to figure...
At this point, there's almost three pages worth of students, so I would say there's probably 80 or 90 at this point, and there's five, going to be more. Kevin? 111, okay, thank you.
So that, you know, that might be one thing to keep in mind when someone questions why our ADM hasn't increased in the last several years, even though we have all the developments in the area. The private school and homeschooling numbers are definitely private school, I don't know about homeschooling, but are going up quite a bit.
And I know all that sounds bad, but I mean, the other side of that coin is, these are all families who live in our district and do pay, or pay property taxes here, and they aren't, we aren't having to educate their children.
Correct.
I mean, that's the other side of that coin.
Right, sure.
That's a good point.
Correct.
None of this money is our money, it's all taxpayer money.
Right, right.
Yep. Okay, any other questions? Okay, where am I at? So it's moved, yeah, seven A was moved by Mrs. Anderson, seconded by Mrs. Dorn, correct? And please call the roll on seven A.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes.
And then seven B is payment in lieu of transportation for student eligibility. So recommend approval of district, non-public, private school districts eligible for receiving and payment in lieu of transportation services for the 24, 25 school year, based on impracticality of school bus transportation. And again, this amount is, is set by the State Board of Education and Workforce.
Sumo, second.
Mrs. Dorn and then Mrs. Anderson.
Again, so there is one school that we do transport, we trans, at this point, to Incarnation, because we have a decent amount of students that are going over there, so, but it's kind of a side note. 111 students, as Mr. Liming mentioned earlier on the list, yep.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, so revisions to board policy. So recommend approval of the following additions, revisions to board policy, 5310, health services, and 5611, due process rights. This is on the last board agenda for a first read, this is second read.
Sumo, second.
Mrs. Dorn and then Dr. Pryor? Anybody have any questions?
Can you, yeah, can you give an explanation?
Yeah, sure, so, 5310, so yeah, so this is for health services, so essentially, as we looked at this policy, actually, the concussion piece was, the main piece that was updated previously, but, so this is essentially health services that we are not going to be conducting any invasive physical examinations or screenings. And I know the next paragraph then says, if we do, we're going to notify you, so it sounds a little, not contradictory, but over, maybe overkill? And so essentially, that is what our, our Niola rep who recommends having both of those pieces in there, and actually, the, the district shall not conduct any of those, was an add. Again, we don't, we don't do any of these. This is, this is for doctors, hospitals, and, and those places to do, we don't do any of these type of physical, invasive physical examinations at school, so I don't know if that...
It does, yeah.
Okay, all right.
It seemed a little contradictory.
Yeah, it, it, it kind of, or it's almost overkill that we're not going to do it, but if we do it, we're going to, we will tell you before, so that's just a recommendation from our Niola rep to be able to have that.
So this policy is a legal requirement for us, is that correct?
That we have, we would have to notify people, correct, parents that are doing that, but we're, we're stating we're not going to, we're not going to do that. No, that is for doctors' offices and hospitals and those places to do those kind of things, not at a school.
Thank you.
Yep. And the other one, the other policy, due process rights, just clarifies, there was some language that was added at some point that was repetitive and also used school days instead of calendar days, so it was just to clean up that particular policy on due process rights.
Okay, it was moved by Mrs. Dorn, seconded by Dr. Pryor, please call the roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
All right, next, items for discussion information. I am very pleased to announce and introduce our new Sedexo manager, Christian Alvarez. We had, I'm sorry?
Corn dog man.
Corn dog man, yes, all right, better known as Corn Dog Man.
Where are the samples?
It's not Costco.
Yeah. Happy to be here. This is my second meeting. Still trying to catch up, but I really enjoy it. I will say that you guys have a really, really, really strong staff back there, pigeons, all your pigeons, being in the industry of my life. I've seen quite a bit, this is a good one, so just happy to be here. I've, I've been with Sedexo, I'm a character, there's input now, we're schools and super excited for my first year at schools. It's been, it's a fun, running around, but it's good. So if you need me, I'm at the central office, board, and it's been fun.
We appreciate you coming to us. We had a fairly rigorous interview process, and you really rose to the top, so you were very impressive and just did a fantastic job, and so we are very pleased to have you here. You do have a strong staff, and that is a positive thing, you know, you'll come into at least, that is a great thing, they are doing great stuff, and so...
Positive, but real pleased to have you. Thank you very much for, for coming, and thanks for coming on board.
Such an important job, we really appreciate you.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you very much.
Yep, policy draft changes. This is a first read for 6233, amenities for participants at meetings and there are other occasions. Mr. Liming, do you want to discuss this one?
Yes. Some of my staff came to me and...
20 percent is the kind of, near the maximum, but is socially acceptable, I guess, so we want to put that in, in here, and that's really all we're adding, is that one sentence with the tips, the maximum 20 percent.
So they come back on the next board agenda?
Yep, so it's just a first read for everybody's knowledge, we can think about it, discuss at the next board meeting, and potentially get a motion and a vote, like always.
Certainly sounds reasonable.
I would think so, just me. I served at Applebee's for three years, so I know what that's like.
Yep, and they're done now.
Okay, anything else, sir, for superintendent's report?
Nope, that is it.
Okay, so I think, yeah, yeah.
Just a quick, a quick comment here. Um, I know, we, I'd asked about this previously, but when are we anticipating a meeting with the township and the city? And we have Forest here, you know, one of the things we were supposed, expecting from the township was a, the support for another SRO, and that's been now a year and a half since, I think, the levy passed, or a year plus now, and we went all last year without having that meeting, and so, just curious if you've.
I emailed today, actually, to try to get a, a meeting set up.
Good, okay.
So I'll, I'll keep you in the loop.
Not your fault, by any means, but I just wanted to get it on the radar, people, and then with Forest with you being here, because we, you know, we've had a few meetings where we met with the local community government, you know, the Bellbrook City, the township, and last year, we were going to meet at the beginning of the year, then it became, well, we'll do it in the spring, and then we didn't do it at all, so now we're into another year here, so, so we'd like to have that discussion again, where we just talk about areas of common interest. Perhaps your discussion tonight about busing came from constituents down there that think you might have some influence as a, as a, you know, council member, and on, you may or may not, but that may have been some of their expectation, you know, and so.
My ears have.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we'd love to meet with, we'd like to have a recurring meeting, get a, it's been a while since we had a meeting with the township and Bellbrook City, we'd like to do that again.
Well, I agree, because, you know, there's, there's always questions in people's minds, not knowing what this and that, not even progressive to a, for the system, I don't, I don't know the details, but there's always anxious concern about, about this working, you know, citizens are wondering, and I think so far, I mean, it's, it's been a positive for most people to have us working together, like.
Yeah.
And that's, I mean, the way, from where I sit and see, I think it's really changed things.
Mm-hmm.
Safety, safety.
Well, there are certainly.
And I think you're right, we do need help.
There are certainly areas of common interest, for example, the SROs I talked about earlier, you know, I, I had spoken at a few city council meetings about safe pathways to school and the crosswalks, and I noticed down there, there's been movement on creating safer crosswalks for kids down there and all, so, just things like that, you know, things of common interest, safety, you know, efficiency, things like that, you know, we benefit from talking more formally and regularly, so.
And crosswalks, that's been, social media, there's been a lot of questions.
Mm-hmm.
We're not done, and there's some differences between some of them.
Mm-hmm.
And you go around the country, different towns, even the base, there's, crosswalks are different, different places.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's like there's no standard. You know, there's a headlights, there's a sign in the middle, you know, and those are kind of the things, once you get it, to a lot of, near completion with your home, and so when that comes out, you know, in front of dogs, that's, that's a big question, or people are not using it, I mean, it's, so, that's one, that's a good thing, probably. But, yeah. But you might, you talk about setting up, like, all three, city?
As was done previously, and it's, it should happen, probably yearly, maybe twice a year, whatever, at least yearly, I would think, last year just a little biased.
Yeah.
I'll, I'm pretty sure.
Anybody have anything else? All right, so we're to number nine, we won't stop.
I just wanted to, before we move on, we've had a really successful start to the school year, but a special goes to transportation, we talked about transportation a lot, but every year, you kind of get used to the, oh, it takes a couple weeks for transportation kinks to get worked out, maybe there were minor blips, but there seemed like very few kinks, it was just a stale mission.
One of the best starts we've ever had.
Like, almost no social media outrage, and just, just really smooth, so pass along goes to everyone in transportation, and everyone in each of the buildings who has now made all the systems so efficient, I think, and I understand what happens.
Well, pass along, been a lot, you know, many changes, those tweak and refining, and just really, really all took a start, and we should, you saying something, that's great.
All right, at this time, I would like to move that we go to executive session for the purpose of considering the employment and compensation of public employee per RC 121.22G1. Does my motion have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Dorn, please call the roll.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
You're fine. Good? All right, so we are out of executive session at 9:27 PM. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Moved, seconded.
Moved by Mrs. Dorn and seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Okay, I will call the roll on the motion to adjourn. Mr. Price?
Yes.